Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly planned Planning Commission meeting for the city of Burnsville of April 8th, 2013. The first item on the agenda is the adoption, I'd call the meeting to order, and then the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from commissioners?
None from staff.
I'd look for a motion then.
I still move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, seconded by Commissioner Tahiri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes three zero. The next item is the approval of minutes from March 25th, 2013. Any changes from commissioners?
No, sir.
No.
Staff?
No changes.
With no changes, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I move.
Moved by Commissioner Tahiri.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes three zero. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's the Asselford Family Limited Partnership for an IUP for soil remediation located west of Lady Bird Lane, east of Dupont Avenue, commonly known as 900 Lady Bird Lane.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff is recommending the public hearing for this item be opened. Take any public comment there may be this evening. Leave the public comment portion open and continue it to a date specific. This is a project that the city has been working very closely with the applicant. We are supportive of the project, but there are a few details that need to get sorted out, and we did advertise prematurely. We feel it'd be prudent to give the application a few more weeks and come back to the Planning Commission.
All right. Any comment from commissioners or anything on that?
Oh, I think, Mr. Chair, I think, under recommendation of staff, I think we should have the public hearing and table it.
All right. With that, I will open this for the public hearing. It's a chance for anyone that wants to speak on this subject to step forth. With that, I will open it up if anybody is, cares to step forward. With that, seeing no one, I will table this then until the Planning Commission hearing of May 13th, is that correct?
Correct. Staff is recommending the May 13th Planning Commission meeting.
All right. With that, will we need a mo, should we need a motion to table that?
Yes, please.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I beg, I move that the Planning Commission continue the Ashford Family Limited Partnership for IUP for soil remediation located west of Lady Bird Lane, east of Dupont Avenue to the, to the May 13th to 2013 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved is second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, seconded by Commissioner Julick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes four zero. All right. The fourth item on the agenda is another public hearing. It's the city of Burnsville for an application for a conditional use permit to allow grading in a floodplain for the North Twin Lakes Stormwater Pond. Mr. Slania?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, this is a application brought on behalf of the city of Burnsville in partnership through easement with the property owner, which is Healy Ramey Corporation. First off, I'd like to just point out where the project is in vicinity to a few streets. You'll see the subject area here, South Cross, 35E and 35W are off to the left. Here is a couple other aerial photos. This is a little bit of a close-up. Again, the interstate is off to the left, Grand Avenue running right here, South Cross. Here is North Twin Lake and the subject site we're discussing. For the benefit of the public and anyone who may be viewing this at home, I'd like to point out, this is not a development project where the neighbors will see buildings, parking lots, substantial tree removal or anything like that. This is a city project to, in short, we're going to be constructing, installing a stormwater pond in this area on the site to collect and, well, simply to collect stormwater that runs from other parts of the city before it enters North Twin Pond. Because of the Shoreland District and other utilities going in, this application requires a conditional use permit. The site is, again, indicated in this area is privately held. The city has obtained the necessary easements for work and access to the stormwater pond. The subject site is two po, excuse me, 21.5 acres in size. And the intent is, again, to construct a man-made stormwater pond that will collect, infiltrate, and mitigate stormwater runoff before it enters North Twin and then eventually on to Early Lake. There are, there, excuse me, there is grading and utility work within the floodplain of North Twin, which requires the conditional use permit that you're reviewing tonight, which also requires the public hearing for this evening. The area south of County Road 42 between 35E and 35W is known as the Golden Triangle. That whole area, if I can get to it on one of these images, it would be just off the page, or excuse me, just off the page to the north. None of the development in that area, parking lots, buildings, have stormwater management at this time. It runs freely from a number of ditches and swales and eventually ends up into North Twin Lake. This application will construct that pond to capture all of that currently untreated stormwater before it enters the system. This is a recommendation of a report the Natural Resources Department pursued back in 2007 on efforts to clean up Early Lake and Twin Lake. Both of them are underperforming as far as water quality goes, and a pond of this nature prior to entering the system was a specific recommendation of that study in '07, and thus we're here in front of you tonight. There is a wetland on the subject site. Again, it puts the project in perspective with some of the homes, as well as South Twin, South Cross. Right in this area is a wetland. Both the city and the city's consultants agree, no one is disputing that is a wetland. Unfortunately, to be both cost-effective and efficient with the construction, the proposed pond would go right in this location, and that requires excavation of that wetland. Both the city's ordinance, which isn't consistent with the Wetland Conservation Act, requires replacement of that wetland at a two-to-one ratio. That replacement currently is not proposed within the city of Burnsville. It would be in conjunction with a Scott County Wetland Bank. Those details need to be sorted out with the Parks and Natural Resources Commission, and they will be, not only Parks and Natural Resources, but City Council before any final permits or construction takes place, but that is the proposal at this time. We have, although we are in a wetland and disturbing and excavating that wetland, because of the proposed mitigation, there are no specific conditions or criteria to that wetland except for the replacement at the higher ratio. We do have a design that I'll get to in one second. Again, here is North Twin Lake. You'll see overland runoff that feeds the lake. This is the area that runs south out of the Golden Triangle. Here's a close-up of the project. You'll see this thick line and the thinner, grayer topography lines. So this is North Twin Lake. Here is the overland that you saw in the last picture, the overland flow. Indicated right here is the wetland. So proposed is actually a two-stage stormwater pond where water would come into the facility in this pond as it increases in level and sediment comes out. It would come to the lower basin or the southern basin, and then finally come over. There is proposed to be emergency overflow in the area and eventually spill into North Twin. Not only would this improve stormwater runoff, but it was also provide some additional floodwater capacity within the sewers, within the city's system. And that, Commissioners, is the project in a very short summary. There are two conditions staff has recommended with this. Again, I'm sorry, I have, I have the wrong conditions in there from a different report. So if you can reference the conditions that are on page nine of your packet, page four of this report, a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers shall be obtained prior to modifications to the wetland, and alterations to the high-water level shall be authorized by the Commissioner of Natural Resources. These are standard criteria, but because of the timing, we're moving ahead with the conditional use permit first. There are additional construction approvals and wetland approvals that need to be reviewed by Parks and Natural Resources and the council, so we're including these conditions in there. With that, Commissioners, our city engineer, Ryan Peterson, is here. I believe between the two of us, we can answer your questions, and it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Any questions for Mr. Slania regarding this? We'll start with him first, I guess. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I have a couple of questions. Number one, 49% of the trees will be taken down. When the work is done, is there any possibility that some trees can be replanted so we can mitigate, mitigate the loss of 49%?
Currently, there are no trees proposed. There is additional vegetation that needs to occur on-site, and that is pursuant to the stormwater management plan to control erosion and so forth. That's certainly something staff can look into. I don't want to redesign the project right now, but I can certainly say we can look into it and possibly have some information back for the city council.
Yeah, I think Burnsville has some trees. I know they're selling trees pretty soon. You know, we can probably, whatever is suitable, if we can add some around probably the corners or something, you know how I feel about trees. I don't hate to lose, I mean, losing 49%. I think that was nicely put. Instead of putting the number of trees, you put 49%. So my next question is, can you explain why we don't need a deviation to meet that 150 feet at a setback?
For the existing sanitary? Certainly. It is in two steps. One, because it is a existing sanitary utility pipe, and there are provisions within the state statute and the city ordinance that gives us flexibility for something that was constructed and exists before any of these other requirements came into play. The second item would be simply because we're improving the situation. With this construction, we'll be lowering that sanitary sewer line, which is, I think, beneficial to everyone.
So you're just following the guidelines?
Correct.
My last question for now, the city has an agreement for drainage and utility easement? According to the notes there, the city has come to agreement for drainage and utility easement with the property owner. It's not very clear.
I'm going to let Ryan answer that because I know there was negotiations, and I don't want to misspeak.
I'll do anything to get Mr. Peterson the podium.
Perfect.
Mr. Peterson?
Good evening, Mr. Singh, members of the commission. The situation is, is we have negotiated details with the property owner. I haven't finalized it because we want to make sure we get our wetland permit from the Department of Natural Resources and everyone associated with the Wetland Conservation Act. So on the off-chance that those folks didn't see the value of this and said, "No, you can't take those wetlands out," we have officially signed our agreements, but in principle, the deal is basically done. And I guess to answer the one question about the trees, the property owner did request that we put some coniferous trees to screen there, so I neglected to inform Mr. Slania of that particular detail, but there should be some restoration of, and they won't be the box elders that are in there now, there'll be some better, well, I guess, depending upon your, what trees you like, but there'll be some coniferous trees.
I love coniferous trees.
Okay, well, good. They'll be going around the south, west, and north. There will be no trees between the lake and the pond, so there'll be some reforestation with the project.
Mr. Chair, why, I wanted him to come up. One other question, Mr. Peterson. This is regarding, do we need that easement thing as a condition? Is it necessary to put it as a condition?
In my opinion, it would not be necessary, and the reason is, is we wouldn't, we won't, we're in control of the situation, so we won't authorize our contractors to go out and do work until we, that easement is in place. So in my opinion, that wouldn't be necessary.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Peterson, Mr. Slania?
Mr. Julick? Thank you, Chair. And may, I don't know if this is for Mr. Slania or you, is the 49% trees, I mean, this is a big site, it looks like it's quite well-vegetated with trees, is the 49% just the small area that's actually being excavated, or it's the overall site?
It is a small, reduced area. I apologize, I did not put that image. Ryan, do you have the details of how, how big or how?
Chris, I can put a plan up that shows the trees, at least in the area, but I mean, just looking at it, I don't believe it's anywhere near 49% of the entire 22 acres there.
Right. I mean, I would guess, you know, if it's just in the areas of the ponds, it's probably, I don't know, less than 10% of the entire area, it looks like.
Yes, somewhere in that 10, 10 to 15%.
How was the 49 calculated, then?
We, we had given them a parameter of the area to be disturbed or the, the project area, and within, within that, then they delineated what's coming in and what's coming out. So the 49% is a little bit disturbing. It, it is a significant number of trees. Ryan, do you have that image? I know we did prepare a tree removal plan. I think the very last page.
It's been a little while since I, oh, look at that, thank you to the control room for making. All right. So this is, once again, where the, where the stormwater would come in from the northwest and then into the first cell that Chris talked about, and then majority of the treatment would occur here. So basically, the trees that are in these contour lines, the contour lines represent where we'd be grading, and of course, where you're grading, the trees are going to have to go. As you can see, I was just looking at earlier, a lot of them are box elders and that sort of thing. We don't get the high-quality trees in wetland areas. You know, that's just not where the oaks and the maples are most comfortable. I'm not saying there's no oaks or maples in this entire area, but in general, it's a lower value on the trees.
So the bulk of the trees, you would say, are, I guess, generally scrub trees, and it's not really the entire site, it's, it's a small subset of the entire site.
We will absolutely disturb as few trees as possible, and scrub trees, they aren't the highest quality, I guess would be the way to state it.
All right. And then with, when the work is performed, you know, some of the work is going to be done on a sanitary sewer line. What impact will be, will occur to, I guess, the surrounding neighborhood that is, I guess, obviously, or maybe using that sanitary line, right? Or is it a much bigger collector line?
How we do work like this is, the sewer pipe that we're be having to lower is right through here, and what, there'll be a manhole right in this location, in fact, there is, and there's, there's one there. What they're going to have to do is actually set up a couple of pumps and that type of thing, and then they will put a pipe over land, and while they're working, they will have to put the sewage, they'll have to pump on-site over, from one site, from one manhole to the other to replicate the situation. So we won't be putting people without sewer service.
So no impact on the surrounding homeowners, or negligible?
Neg, I would, yes. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Tahiri?
Thank you, Chair. So could you clarify, the question I have is, the size of this wetland is actually increasing from what, what existing is? And the reason for that is the existing wetland is not adequate for to?
Or, yeah, Commissioner Tahiri, the, the wetland is obviously natural occurring. We are going to be digging into the ground several feet to have much more stormwater retention. Well, how it works is, when you have retention of stormwater, the water flows through and sits there for a while, and then the solids that are collecting there can settle out to the bottom of it, and then, then we can come in with a backhoe at some future date and take those out. Right now, it doesn't have any of that depth, and basically, the stormwater just continues to run right through in the North Twin Pond. So this allows us to, through settling, to take out some of, a lot of the phosphorus and solids that are in the water to prevent it from getting into Early Lake. So you don't design wetlands, they naturally occur, and they just weren't designed with that in mind.
Thank you. Also, so by increasing the size of the wetland, we are also adjusting the setbacks and easements and so forth for surrounding properties and possible future developments of the, of the adjacent properties, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if I can address that just briefly, the, the wetland, I apologize, I don't remember the square footage, but it was between 15 and 2,000 square feet. It's not a, not a huge wetland. There, there are no direct impacts to that wetland. There were, I think the existing development is farther enough away. We're not changing any setbacks by removing that wetland. However, the, the Shoreland District and Floodplain District of North Twin Lake is also remaining the same, and those are much more broad-reaching than, than any of the setback requirements for the wetland. Those reach, the Shoreland District is 1,000 feet from the edge of the lake. So there, as indicated in the report, there are many levels, Shoreland, Floodplain, Wetland, many levels to this project, but unfortunately, the, because the location of the wetland and our, our efforts, that's being removed to, to put in the natural pond, or the man-made pond.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so we will open this for anyone who wishes to comment on it. Please step forward. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark Iverson. I live at 14604 Carriage Lane, which is directly across from North Twin and South Twin there. I commend the city for putting in the stormwater pond, and it's, it's definitely needed because in the 26 years I've lived there, the water quality of North Twin and South Twin has gone down substantially. My biggest concern is really about the construction process. As I was telling Ryan, rather than have the construction equipment enter off South Cross, which would be a continuation of Carriage Lane, the road I live on directly across there, I would like to see the city and its contractors come in through Grand Avenue because there is a class-five road that goes down there that is used by the city and others to, to monitor the storm sewer stuff down there. And you've already got Grand, which is in disrepair, and I guess, scheduled for rehab in 2015. Let's ruin a road that's already bad. And then more importantly, when you get along South Cross on the south side of that property, in about 25 to 40 feet, there are beautiful pin oaks, aspens, and other trees like that. And as it relates to the actual stormwater pond, I would hope that as long as this turns out as good as the one you did on the corner of Burnhaven and South Cross for Early Lake, we'll be happy as a nearby residents. I think in terms of the trees, because I walk my dogs back there all the time, I'd say most of the trees that are affected are, you know, scrub or junk trees, but there are some aspens in there that probably will be compromised because there's a, a family of about eight to 10 deer that live back there, and there are some beautiful aspens in there. And so my biggest concern on the, again, the South Cross side, is if they come in through that entrance, where we did have a gate put in because there has been a public safety issue over the last 26 years there, because that main stormwater pipe is at least 10 to 12 feet in diameter with no grate on the end. So we get a lot of, you know, adolescents and, and older young adults back there trying to use illegal substances, so we've had a lot of police calls back there over the 25, 26 years I've lived there. So I would like to see a condition of this, that there's a grate put on that big culvert that runs from the Golden Triangle before it runs into the stormwater pond. If you're back there doing work, let's put a grate so the kids can't go back in there and walk in the, the big sewer pipe. So two things, let's, let's get a request on there to put a grate on that sewer pipe that goes back there, which is massive in size, and two, my preference would be as if the construction could enter from Grand Avenue down what is already a class-five, essentially, road into that site directly where the stormwater pond's going to be dug versus the snaking in that they'd have to do off South Cross where the extension of Carriage Lane would be. That would be my request.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just, if you could hold on just for one second. Any questions or comments?
No, I, Mr. Chair, I would like to, either Mr. Peterson or Mr. Slania to respond to the requests from Mr. Iverson.
All right. Either Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Members of the Commission, once again. The two points, the storm sewer pipe that the resident talked about, we're actually going to hook up, connect to that pipe and extend it a bit towards the pond, so it's going to go right into the pond. Our general policy on storm sewer pipes that enter into a pond Our general policy on storm sewer pipes that enter into a pond is we don't put those trash guards on there. And there's the one reason for that is if someone happens to get into the pipe during a storm event, they at least have a chance to make it out. As soon as you put that grate on there and you get a big rain event, if they may... Somehow, if someone gets in there, I mean, they're done. You cannot get back out now. Not putting one in there presents other, you know, safety issues of someone entering into it. Certainly, you could. It is rather large. So in general, we do not do that. And that's the purpose of that policy. Secondly, we are, at this time, proposing to construct or have access for the construction off of South Cross, unfortunately. The purpose for that is the easement that we're obtaining is off of South Cross. So that'll be the future way to get it out. Should this area ever develop into... I mean, I... The city would love for it to be... Maybe Chris is going to not want me to say something like this. But, you know, if it could be a corporate campus or that sort of thing, you know, they aren't going to want our vehicles maintaining the pond off of Grand. That'll be that way. So our access in the future will be off of South Cross as well. That being said, I can certainly talk with the landowner and see if they would be willing to allow us to enter and exit through that site. At least, I can reach out to them and state... I'll have to check with our consulting engineer also to make sure that it's reasonable for us to construct it from that direction. But if it is, we could verify that either A, he will allow us to go through there to construct it, or B, no, he won't. In which case, our only option to construct the project would be to off of South Cross Drive then.
Commissioner Gillick?
Thanks, Chair. Mr. Peterson, could you sort of explain where the current access is proposed? And then where... Maybe show where the access is off of Grand?
Well, this is a curb cut right here that exists. So it's possible we would come right up here and over this way. Or it would be somewhere... We might just jump the curb, actually, right here to get up as quickly as we can. Because basically, our easement area is going to be somewhere like that. So that's the general easement. And if we can't get access from the property owner through this area for some reason that the property owner is uncomfortable with the city obtaining it and having trucks going up and down there, then the only option will be to get that.
So where... It's sort of coming from the top off the page down this... It sort of looks like there's something next to the swale or something?
Right. Can you see the pointer on there?
Yep.
Yeah. If you just continue northwest, north, mostly north, a little northwesterly, this eventually runs into Grand Avenue. That's the basic alignment also of the pipe that we're...
And that's an existing Class 5?
Um, it's marginally developed, but it's certainly there is... There has been vehicles that have used it.
And are you doing some type of... It sounds like you're extending. I don't... Where does the pipe end now currently?
Somewhere in this area. And then we're just going to hook onto it and bring it over to about here into the pond area. It's not a... We're not going to do too much work that direction. It's probably 100 feet of pipe or so, 150.
Is it... Is... I mean, how big is... What's the diameter of the open?
Um, our records show it as a 72-inch or six-foot pipe.
And will that be reduced at all or remain the same size?
Remain the same size.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Peterson, is there... Can we put some kind of barrier around that pipe or in that vicinity where the mouth of the pipe would be? I hear what Mr. Iverson is saying.
I do, too.
And who knows? Kids could be playing. And, I mean, you don't want them in that area. So is there anything, a piece of chain link fencing or something that can be erected to prevent people from going there?
This... Your old... Our Commissioner Singh, it's, you know, we're getting to public safety issues and private... You know, the city does not own this whole lot. It's... It'd be more of a private property issue. Obviously, it's the city's issue if there's illegal activities going on there. But as far as chaining off an entire private site, I don't know that the city can really get involved in that. Chris, you...
Mr. Chair Commissioners, just one thing I was going to mention to Ryan's point is right now... I apologize. I haven't been to where the existing pipe ends, but it seems to be pretty accessible to everyone if they get on that gravel path and get down to the existing pipe. Where with the extension of the 100 feet, once it's finished and completed, the end of the pipe will be at the proposed stormwater pond. It'll be a ways now away from the gravel road or the gravel path, if you will. And obviously, if somebody wants to get back there, they will. But this may disrupt things enough to deter them.
Commissioner Gillick?
Thank you, Chair. Does the pipe lower there? So, I mean, is it... Will it be a spillover or will it actually be in the wa... In the... At the expected water level or partially submerged? The egress of the pipe or whatever?
I don't have that exact detail, but my... I believe it'll be right in the upslope of the pond, very close to the level, the normal level, normal water level of the pond. So I think that if someone still really wanted to get in there, you know, they still could.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Teary?
Thank you, Chair. This... The construction is of this pond, is that going to create any kind of a restriction on the access to these, to the residential properties on the south of...
South Cross?
Yeah. South Cross. So there's no barrier, no temporarily restriction or changing routes or...
It's conceivable we would have, like, the outside right lane, you know, closed if trucks were having to leave there. But that would be the only restriction anyway.
Nothing on the south?
There... No, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Commissioner? No, I'm okay. This is... The public hearing is still open. Mr. Iverson, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Thank you, Ryan, for your feedback. Again, my only concern is if they just don't use the curb cut and just go off the sidewalk down there. Over the last 25 years, there's been a lot of beautiful aspens that have seeded between South Cross and North Twin there. So to do that, they're going to end up tearing out a lot of beautiful aspens. And that's different than tearing out box elder. And then also, if they use the curb cut, right by that curb cut is a beautiful, probably 100-year oak. And so what happens is you go in that curb cut, you make an immediate 90-degree turn and then another 90-degree turn back there. And that's where we had the city install a gate three years ago because you were getting sometimes in the evening, four or five cars and pickup trucks from adolescents and young adults back there. They park back there. They'd have a campfire and then they'd go back into the sewer pipe, so to speak. So there is, you know, you can open the gate and you could drive any of our vehicles, you know, including a large SUV back there, no problem. But if you're talking about bringing in big dump trucks and other earth-moving equipment, it's going to require more trees and stuff get cut down along the South Cross edge of that property. And that's really my concern, is losing the trees along South Cross to use that as an access when there is a wide-open field, 30-foot-wide path with that Class 5 going right up to Grand Avenue. So again, my concerns are voiced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Chair. I follow up on the comments that the gentleman has. Have... Chris, have we done any accurate tree survey inventory of the area? To be more specific, what type of trees? What areas are exist or maintained or removed? Or we just go in a big bulk?
No. We have been onsite and taken inventory. At this point, what I guess what we've focused on is the pond construction. I can't say... I apologize. I can't say what trees would be removed with access or getting vehicles back there. That's something certainly we can look at. I think part of it, well, two phases. We haven't let this out for bid. The council hasn't approved the projects or anything like that. So some of the details as to where the contractor's going to access the site just haven't been sorted out. To Ryan's point, we don't want to remove any more trees than absolutely necessary. It's... This is an environmental project. We don't want to be removing trees to construct a pond that's going to improve the water. So we can... We can work through those with the contractor as we release the bid. But I'm concerned... I don't know that the planning commission should bog it down with too many conditions relating to some of those details, at least at this point.
Commissioner Gillick?
Thank you, Chair. Would the maintenance easement, the maintenance easement runs along the west edge of North Twin there? Is that correct? There looks to be... Oh, it looks like there is a little bit of a road kind of running parallel to the west shore. Is that... Is that where the easement is for the... To perform maintenance and such?
Ryan, could you... I believe it's that access road, but I will...
Yeah. The... This is approximate location of the existing sanitary sewer main. So we've had to drive up and down there a bit to do that. It's not as defined as the road going up to Grand.
But it would be more or less along that line over the existing sewer main? That's where the access and utility or the easement would be for maintenance?
Right. We would most likely further develop it with... We're not going to go crazy out there. But further develop it so that we are able to, in the future, gain reasonable access back there.
So as part of the program, whatever's necessary to make that access road accessible for maintenance purposes would be done? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Saini, I wonder if you can help me here. Mr. Iverson mentioned that there is a herd of deer living in that area. What impact this work will have? Will you have to move them? Or would they be still hiding somewhere in the other area of that wetland?
To be honest, Commissioners, we haven't reviewed it to that much detail. This would be a one-season project. It would be a warm one... Warm one-season project. I can't say that they will or won't return because of that work being done. Once this season's over, assuming the project moves ahead as scheduled, we get in there very, very infrequently to do maintenance. Typically, it depends on how quickly the sediment fills up in the pond, but it could be years before we would have to get back in there. So to your point, if the deer would stick around past this first construction season, they'd be safe to return.
Thank you. Good for the Chair.
Any other comments?
One more question. Thank you, Chair. So to follow up, a comment that Mr. Seig. This project, has this been in complete collaboration with DNR for all their requirements and restrictions? And we have to obtain their approval as well prior to...
It does. Commissioners, Mr. Chair, this started, actually, it started not quite a year ago, but it did start last fall. There's been some wetland work to do, to do the original location and so forth. But there still needs to be a DNR review and the Board of Sewer and Water... Board of Soil and...
Bowser?
Yes. I can't...
Board of Waters. So in Army... US Army Corps of Engineers are the folks who review the wetlands. The DNR's main focus is for any work we actually are working below the normal water level in North Twin. Some different agencies are more inclined to review the wetland aspects.
So they have received plans of this. They're up to speed. Again, there's a number of steps that have to happen before we go onsite or send a contractor onsite. But they've been involved and they've been commenting on the project.
Any other questions, concerns at this point?
Hang on. Public hearing is still open?
Yep. Still open. Yep. The public hearing, as mentioned, is still open. Anyone else that would like to comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners? Comments? Commissioner Singh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As a Chair, I would not as a condition, but I would ask staff to explore the possibility of discussions with the property owner to see if we can use the Grand Avenue to get entrance to the work rather than coming through. The... What's the name of the other one that you mentioned?
South Cross Drive?
South Cross. Yes. South Cross. I know South Cross, they come that way and Grand come the other way. So I would make that recommendation that staff explore that possibility.
Any other comments? Commissioner Gillick?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. I concur with Commissioner Singh that if... While the work is performed, if they can use the other access, I would encourage them to look for it. I understand that they'll still have to make the easement for future access, come out from South Cross Drive and do whatever's necessary there, too. But again, since the next maintenance function there is years away, I would encourage them to minimize the impact as you go towards South Cross also. So... And I empathize with Mr. Iverson's statements there. But I think the project is one of value to the greater community. The... There's been numerous discussions about water quality within Burnsville and specifically concerns regarding Early Lake and the Twin Lakes here. And undertaking this project that will improve the water quality in all those bodies of water as well as the downstream bodies. I think Rosemount Pond flows... Early goes to Rosemount or... I'm not sure. The lake right at the Rosemount facility?
I guess maybe... I have a judicial pond right on Judicial Row in Rosemount there.
Yeah. Okay. That's like...
It was just semantics.
Oh, okay.
That... I think that one actually goes... Flows out of there north into Sunset.
So Early is a terminal?
Um, well, Early, most likely. We generally flow from south to north. So we most likely are flowing... I don't have the storm sewer map there quite memorized, but most likely, the water from Early Lake would get up over to Judicial as opposed to the other way around.
Okay. Yeah. That's what I meant, that it would then flow into other ponds in the city. And so no matter what, it's a benefit to all those bodies of water. And so if there are some impacts here, I mean, that's a little bit of pain that we need to feel as a community. Regarding his concern on the grate, I understand that concern also. I also understand the engineering and safety reasons for leaving that open and liability issue, as well as liability issues. And, you know, I don't know if there's some middle ground solution, but it seems like the proposed solution is appropriate.
Commissioner Teary?
Yes. I also, thank the Chair, would like to add to the comments of the colleagues here that to encourage the city to work with contractors to preserve as many valuable trees they can run into if they can be taken out and replaced or relocated, I strongly recommend that versus just waste them. But that's basically my only comments I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Teary.
I would agree also with exploring the option of coming off of Grand if that's possible. Overall, though, I think obviously this is a good project. It's going to hopefully help clean up the water, which I think is a benefit overall. It's something that I think should proceed. I think it will be beneficial to everyone. Too bad we have to lose a few trees. Sounds like most of them are... Too bad we have to lose a few trees, sounds like most of them are, are lower quality, so, uh, overall, this is, certainly has, uh, much more benefit than any downside to it, so I would, I would be supporting it. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the conditional use permit to construct a stormwater pond north of North Twin Lake with the following two conditions. One, a permit from the United States Army Corps of Engineers shall be obtained prior to modifications to the wetland, and two, alterations below the ordinary high water level of North Twin Lake, which is a public water body, shall be authorized by the Commissioner of Natural Resources under Minnesota Statutes, Section 103G.245.
Any seconds?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Singh, seconded by Commissioner Julik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion pass 4-0. Uh, next item on the agenda, if...
If I can, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I apologize, I just want to, um, butt in and indicate to the public, this will be reviewed by the council at their meeting on April 16th, and although your comments on the, the access and the tree preservation weren't conditions, we will, uh, uh, convey that in the, in the planning background to the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Slaney, I appreciate that. It was good to, uh, alert that. Um, with that, I think we can move to the next one, which is any updates Commissioners? Staff, any update?
Uh, I just bring the tentative agenda for April 22nd. Um, that's it from staff Commissioners.
All right. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Commissioner Julik, seconded by Commissioner Teary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you everybody for tuning in. Until next time, we are adjourned.